All right, I am going to call to order the meeting for Monday, March 11th at 7:00 PM. We acknowledge we are meeting on the shared traditional lands of the Koshalish people. I'm going to call to, uh, looking for a approval of the agenda, please.
So moved, Your Worship?
Uh, thank you, secondor. Moved by Council Logan, seconded by Council Kobiyashi. All those in favor, opposed, carried. Public participation. And this is not for people who have been scheduled to do an actual presentation, so this is just for public. I'd like to invite anyone present to take this opportunity to address council, to present concerns or ask questions of council. Comments pertaining to a matter that has been to the subject of a public hearing are prohibited where the bylaws related to the matter have not been presented to council for consideration of adoption. There is a maximum of twenty minutes allocated for public participation. Topics should be addressed briefly to allow other speakers to speak. Are there any people in the public who would like to address us this evening?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Courtney Fraser, representing Gablecraft Homes, 300 Latoya Boulevard. We're applying for a development variance to display oversized temporary signage in our development. We currently have four of the allowed three-meter-square temporary signs throughout our development and are finding it's insufficient as the signs are lost due to the scale of our development. I'd like to actually address some of the points that were raised during the Advisory Planning Commission. First, we require the Dunland Street signs for the sale of Phase Two. You will find this in Appendix Six. We estimate it will take up to a maximum of three years, as we have already started construction on it, and if we require them longer, we have no issues coming back to council. Second, as you will see in Appendix Five, some of the neighboring municipalities who have developers that we are in direct competition with allow signs from twelve to eighteen meters squared for lots larger than 1,486 meters squared. The two lots that we are asking to put signage on are 1.12 and 1.24 hectares, or 11,200 meters squared and 12,400 meters squared, so significantly larger. Finally, the commission was concerned that if Gablecraft Homes was to stop construction at Royal Bay, that the signs would be left standing, so we are prepared to put up a $500 bond to the city for sign removal with a letter allowing the city to trespass onto our property if construction, if construction was to stop completely for more than six months. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, is there anyone else?
Mr. Mayor, Council, thank you. My name is Dean Reed. I live at 2915 Dickerson, and I have a development, development variance permit before you tonight, as referred to by the committee of the whole last week. I'm grateful and I appreciate the committee recommending my, my proposal in general to this council. Well, while that, I'm a bit of a rookie for council and, and meetings as such. While I, while I was at the meeting a week ago, I tried to have a discussion, but I guess I missed the boat a bit on that. It had already gone to a vote, correct me if I'm wrong, or for council discussion, or committee discussion, but I, I wanted to chime in on their, their discussion regarding the, the lighting at the end of 80 Road, which I am planning to develop, subdivide into a, an extra, one extra building lot. The point I was trying to make at the time was the fact that, um, early on in the process of subdividing this, I, there was, it was, it was determined that 80 Road was sufficiently lit and did not require any more lighting. Those discussions involved Mr. Mullner and his team, and perhaps would like to speak to the council or answer any questions about that. I took a few photos and created a diagram for council. As you can see, there's two existing streetlights, one, they're approximately a hundred meters apart, and one is very close to the end of 80 Road, and indeed only twenty-six meters from where it was proposed that I put a, a second streetlamp. After the, after the meeting last Monday, some, an engineering firm that I engaged with, and I went to the end of 80 Road and stood in the darkness and could, even my tired eyes could plainly read the, the minutes that were handed out. There is sufficient light and, and if you can, in my opinion, just sufficient light. The first picture in, in your little handout is sort of taken along from within the, the right-of-way, heading back towards 80 Road, and you can see that overhead is a streetlamp, and it, and it shines, I don't know if that was by, by design or by fluke, but it shines directly down the pathway leading across the, the Hatley Park Cemetery. And of course, the third picture is just, uh, indicates where the lamppost is in, in relation to the rest of the property there. So I'm, 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 I'm not a land developer for a living. This is the first time I've ever had to attempt to do something like this. I've, I've been a correctional officer since I was twenty, so this is a bit out of my comfort zone. I acknowledge the fact that there's, when developers do projects, there are some civic costs to bear, and I, and I don't begrudge that at all. I'm just suggesting that the end of 80 doesn't need the light that was proposed by the committee.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we'll, we'll go to, we'll go to staff while you're, when it's your actual development. Is there anybody else for public? Uh, yeah?
I'm Ayak Sagamonian, 3140 Flanagan Place. I did apply for building a garage on the property, and the issue is it's in Riparian area. So we did all the homework, like biologist, horticulturist, and neighbors, and we come up with all feasible, and actually biologist's report says the creek is sensible at ten meters, and we're building garage at seventeen meters, while bylaw is thirty meters, and that's why we applied, and then, or variance, I believe, was in favor of approval, and...
Thank you, yeah. We'll, we'll, we'll be talking about yours when it comes up as well. Thank you. Any other public? All right, seeing none, then I'm going to move on to Mayor's message. Just two quick messages. I, I last week had the opportunity to go see Peter in the Star Catcher at Royal Bay High School. Fabulous play. I think it's over now, but the, the students should be very proud. They did an awesome job. Also, if you haven't seen, we have a photo contest on, for the 2020 calendar. We've had, we've made choices for the first four, and one of the things that we noticed to the public, if, if they're listening through the, through the web or anything, is one of the things that we are not getting a lot of is sort of neighborhoods, and I would love to see a little more neighborhoods of not the, I love Hatley Castle, I love Fiskard Lighthouse, I love Lagoon, but we get a lot of pictures of that, but we don't get a lot of pictures of Triangle Mountain and, and all those type of things. So please send all your photos, but we'd love to see some, some of the local neighborhoods as well, in our community. And that's it for me. I will go to council, though. Does anyone have anything to share? Nope, then, oh, yes, Stuart, or Council Parkinson?
Sorry, Your Worship. I just would share with council that APC is this Wednesday night. I had made arrangements to be out of town for Wednesday night. Michael Baxter and I are the two council representatives. Michael, as I think we all saw from the emails today, is down for the count, says he won't be available for Wednesday night, so there will be no council representation. Now, we're observers. We don't say anything, but we do listen, and I, I guess, wouldn't, if, if somebody was free Wednesday night and could go and sit in the audience and listen, I think that would be useful. I'm sorry to dump it on people if, if you could make it, I think, sorry.
Thank you, Council Parkinson. I think that's a great idea. If anyone could come and listen, that would, that would probably be helpful. And thank you, I, I am remiss for, Council Baxter did call earlier today, and unfortunately, he's quite sick, and I believe Council Jensen's on his annual holidays, I think, so lucky him. Moving on to five, 5.1, looking for a motion to adopt the regular meetings of February 25th. Thank you, Council Kobiyashi, secondor.
Second.
Thank you, Council Logan. Any errors, omissions, questions? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor, opposed, carried. 5.2, committed whole meeting of February 19th. May I get a motion to receive, please? Thank, moved by Council Parkinson, seconded by Council Kobiyashi. Any errors, omissions, questions? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor, opposed, carried. We are in presentations. The first is 6.1 from the Greater Victoria Chamber of Commerce. Please, you are welcome to come on up and...
Hi, everybody. My name is Dan Dag. I'm the Chair of the Greater Victoria Chamber of Commerce. Thank you for, for having us here today. Let me start. Our mission at the, the Chamber of Commerce is working together to build good business and great community, and we've been doing that for 156 years now. We've got 1,400 members that live and work everywhere, here in, in, in all of our, our regions. Interestingly enough, I was standing here four years ago, talking to council, presenting the idea of the South Island Prosperity Project, which was all about economic collaboration and working together for the betterment of everyone. And ironically, you know, I'm here again today delivering the same message in a slightly different form, you know? So the South Island Prosperity Project was initiative, an initiative of the Greater Victoria Chamber of Commerce that has come into fruition and doing wonderful things. It's just one of a long line of, of great ideas and initiatives that the Chamber has introduced, such as Tourism Victoria, such as the Airport Authority, such as the Film Commission, such as the Harbor Authority. These are all initiatives that came out of the Chamber and were, were embraced by everyone in our community, and I think we can all see how we benefit from that today. So, um, healthy communities depend on a couple of things. One, a vibrant economy, which is comprised of businesses coming into the community, which is what the South Island Prosperity Project does. They bring people, businesses, to our region. And what we do at the Chamber is we embrace them once they're here and make sure that they succeed and do well in our communities. And to do that, they need the support of all communities. We need to integrate, as we know, people don't understand, the shoppers, businesses, the economy doesn't understand municipal boundaries. And so what we're here to do is, is to embrace everybody and welcome you to our fold if we can. I'm going to turn it over to Catherine to talk more.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm Catherine Holt, CEO of the Greater Victoria Chamber of Commerce. How much time do I have, Mayor? Ten minutes, okay. This will maybe take five and then five more minutes for a question and answer. Does that work? Okay. So we do focus very much on professional development. This is something that I think, I'm going to say Victoria and Sandwich probably a little too much for your appetite, but there are two models of what we think works in the relationship between the Chamber and municipal government, and this is something that they take a lot of advantage of. They have staff that attend various things, and our staff attend various things of theirs, but it's those connections between the business community and all the other people who come to our functions that I think is, are the value of our network. We have lots of not-for-profit and public sector members, and they come so that we all are part of the same network. So just a few examples here, as I said, Victoria and Sandwich. We have an interesting event this spring. They're going to both speak at our AGM about the Citizens Assembly, which we're very much looking forward to. We deal a lot with the Victoria Business Hub, and we have engaged most recently with the Sandwich Business Survey. Municipal staff attend our events, I just said that. I meet with the Victoria Mayor and a bunch of other business associations every month to consult about what's going on in the business community, and some of the issues that we've provided input on are plastic bags, childcare parking bike lanes recently for both of those municipalities. Some of our, our more high-profile events, I'm kind of fanning it hard on the neck looking up at things, so maybe I'll try looking down at this thing. So for upcoming, for 2019, we have seventy events planned. We get almost, we get sixty, 6,500 attendees. I was going to say where it's almost seventy events and 7,000 people is what we might get to this year. Some of our, our events so far this year, so we're only at the beginning of March, and we've already had all of those speakers that are listed there. It's been a pretty wild 2019 for us so far. A couple of highlights only, we had the, the same, about sixty-five, seventy events last year. A few of the highlights, though, were Governor of the Bank of Canada. We had a very interesting cannabis panel just as it was, the week it was being legalized. Very interesting discussion about the consequences, most of which have not panned out so far from what I can see. And the Finance Minister. We also have fun events. We have a summer social series. We have YYJ Eats, which is like a foodie event. We have our very popular Business Awards Gala every year, and our fundraising auction once a year. So, you know, there's a lot of professional development for sure, but we also have a lot of fun. There's a lot of socializing, there's a lot of personal connections, there's a lot of friendships, there's, it, there's a lot of good times to be had, too. It's not all serious stuff. Um, yeah, so I've already mentioned, we have many public and not-for-profit sector members. UVIC, CFB, Esquimalt, BC Ferries, VicPD, CRD, some of those are actually our biggest, our biggest members, and certainly very actively involved. And many not-for-profits use us as a way to connect with the people that they count on to contribute to their not-for-profit organizations. One thing that we think would be useful to Callwood is our sponsoring and advertising opportunities. The City of Victoria, Sandwich is fairly new to us, as I said, we're having the mayor at the AGM, but they have used our advertising for many years before they joined, and Victoria certainly uses it. And sponsorship, City of Victoria sponsors quite a bit, and that gives Lisa the opportunity, Mayor, the opportunity to stand up and address whatever event that, that she's sponsoring and, you know, have a few minutes of her own time to talk about her own priorities. And the CRD also advertises, I should say, Victoria, Sandwich, and CRD. And one of the ways that the, one of the venues we have for advertising that's very effective and popular, we have a weekly biz news, which is a consolidation of items that we find interesting and important for the business community about just news in general, but also our members and what's going on with them. About 4,000 people receive that. It's got a very high open rate, and again, we regularly try, we try, because it's member news, it's business news, it's member news. So if you're a member, we do try to focus on what's happening with you. So we do use the news releases and the announcements and the information that we get regularly from municipal, not-for-profit, public sector, as well as our private sector members in biz news. So it's a good network for you, or a good way, distribution channel for you. And finally, we do advocate, so that's, that's, that goes both ways. You can tell us what's your priority, and we tend to have a good working relationship with the municipalities that are members and talk to them quite often about what our priorities are. For 2019, we've set a set of advocacy priorities, as you see them. Adequate labor supply is absolutely number one for our private sector and public sector employee, employers, all of our employers. We think it is composed of immigration, childcare, transportation, and housing, all going in the right direction to try to set better terms and conditions here for employers to attract and retain the workers that they need. We consider that to be really the biggest hurdle or the biggest obstacle to businesses doing as well as they could in the region at the moment, not being able to get and keep workers. Fair rules covers all the types of regulations that businesses face at the municipal, regional, provincial, federal level. We mostly focus provincially, or should, I should say locally and regionally, somewhat provincially. Safe at home and work, safe communities, we consider that the foundation for everybody to function effectively as a business. So that's a lot of commentary about what, all, all the contributions it takes, much of that by municipal government to keep our municipalities safe. Government that works, effective governance and services of every kind. Our regional economy, we work with SIP a lot to promote regional economy, but as Dan said, over the years, the Chamber has done a lot of different innovative things to try to build the economy in many ways. And climate change solutions is something that is becoming a more and more prominent issue, of course, for everybody, certainly for all of our members, and certainly for our business members who are concerned and, concerned in a couple of ways. They want fair regulation that they can manage, but they also want business innovation and opportunity to be taken advantage of by government and used as a solution with regard to these daunting problems. So that's it, really fast. Sorry if I went too fast, and I'd be very happy to answer any questions. We did distribute a few pieces of literature there, our upcoming events. Next thing up is Jonathan Wilkinson on Friday, which should be a very lively event because he's talking about fish and whales, and we have Chamber members from many parts of the island coming down to have a conversation with him about that. And we have our benefits publication there and our most recent magazine, which outlines a little bit more about our advocacy priorities.
Excuse me, I will go to council. Council, do you guys have any questions? Seeing none, I, oh, sorry, Doug does, Doug does. Sorry, Doug.
I have to ask you a question, Catherine. It wouldn't be me without asking questions. Just, just quickly, Catherine, I mean, I, I was involved with the chambers, you know, four years ago, and, but I had a different problem. I had to fix it first. I'm just wondering, which, which relationship now are you cooperating and working with the West Shore Chamber of Commerce then, and what's the relationship right now?
Yeah, well, first of all, the reason we're here tonight to attract you guys as members is we're trying very hard to be the Greater Victoria Regional Chamber of Commerce, and we're, we're really trying to add value by being able to say, we pay attention to all parts of the region, all sectors, and we're trying to build the big network between everybody. But I have very intentionally developed some opportunities to work with the other chambers that we have in the region. So for the last two years, we'll be heading into our third year, we have an annual five-chamber mixer. First time was at Camoson Interurban, second time was at Elements Casino in, in View Royal, third time is San Pen Chamber, so it'll probably be up Airport or somewhere in Sydney. Very well-attended, very popular with our Chamber members because they get the chance to, if you usually go to the West Shore Chamber, you get the chance to meet a lot more people who are affiliated with the Chamber and not just in your specific part of the region. And we've had Premier Horgan for the last two years, and we have made that a five-chamber event. So we've had the presidents from each of the five chambers at the head table to interact with Horgan because he's the premier, because he's local, he's, he's from our region, too. So we wanted all the regions' chambers to be at the table and have the chance to talk to him. So we're building on it. We're, we're getting more and more happening among the local chambers.
Uh, it doesn't look like there's any more questions, so thank you, thank you, Kath.
We'd love to have you.
So council, bringing you back to the council table, we've got two options this evening. One is that we can just receive the re, presentation. The second is that council can become a member of the Greater Victoria Chamber of Commerce and an annual cost of $1,095 to be funded through corporate memberships. And my understanding is we've already spoken to our Director of Finance, and that's already within the budget under corporate membership, so it's not an addition number. So what's the will of the committee, or council, excuse me?
We don't get a question?
We are.
I would move receipt of the presentation.
Thank you. Counsel Day has moved it. Do I have a secondor? All right, thank you. Counsel Kobiyashi has seconded. Discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the, call the question. I'll call the question. All those in favor, opposed, carried. Thank you. All right, moving on, then, um... Excuse me, I shouldn't turn this off. 6.2, Bruce Gibbons, BC Groundwater Stop Bottling of Groundwater, presentation.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, councilors, and staff of the City of Callwood. Thank you very much for allowing me to address you this evening. My name is Bruce Gibbons. I live in Murrell in the Comox Valley, and I'm here this evening to address council about the issue of protecting our groundwater, the water in our aquifers on Vancouver Island and all over British Columbia. In November of 2017, the provincial government approved a groundwater extraction license for a resident of Murrell to bottle and sell the water from the Comox Valley aquifer. We successfully campaigned for the Comox Valley Regional District to deny the rezoning that was necessary to bottle the water on site. Therefore, his license, the current license, he, his license does not allow the applicant to utilize his license and bottle the water on his property. However, his water extraction license is still valid, since that's under the provincial jurisdiction, and I've been campaigning since March of last year to prevent him from trucking the water to a site that does allow bottling of groundwater. I realize it would not be feasible for the license holder to truck the water to Callwood, but I have approached all AVICC members, asking them to revise their bylaws to prevent the bottling of groundwater by any water license holder. I filed an appeal against the water license last March, but after a lengthy battle with the Flynn Road Ministry, the Environmental Appeal Board dismissed the appeal, stating that I did not have standing to appeal, which in my opinion exposed a serious flaw in the Water Sustainability Act. That act denies the appeal of a water license unless the license physically detrimentally affects your land. Not your water, not your access to water, but your land. I couldn't prove that it affected my land, so my, my appeal was denied. So that's one of the things that really led me to, to start this campaign. I found that appalling, that the Water Sustainability Act doesn't protect our water. We have approximately 1,200 signatures to date on a petition to the provincial government asking them to stop approving licenses to bottle and sell groundwater. We also have that same petition online, and are, to date, approximately 1,330 signatures. The petition is scheduled to be presented in the B.C. Legislature on March 27th by our MLA. If B.C.'s aquifers are depleted, then the thousands of residents and farmers who rely on them will not be able to look after their personal needs for drinking water, sanitation, growing their backyard gardens, or growing their crops, and raising their livestock. That would put our food security at risk. Without water, farmers cannot produce our food, and as we've seen with the severe drought in California, we will not be able to continue to rely on importing our food from that source. Without water, there is no life. We're facing population growth that will put more demand on the aquifers, and we're already seeing the negative effects of climate change impact the quality and quantity of water, in the summer drought period especially. We experienced Level IV drought all over Vancouver Island this past summer and in many other areas of B.C. as well. Residents and farmers are told to conserve water during these Level IV droughts, yet corporations that hold provincial water, water licenses are allowed to continue pumping and generating huge profits from the aquifers we all rely on despite that Level IV drought. There is not enough information known about our aquifers to risk bottling and selling any of that water. Climate change is causing extended periods of serious drought, putting rivers, streams, fish habitat, and fish stocks at risk, and is causing sources of recharge for the aquifers to disappear, evidenced by receding glaciers and diminishing snowpacks. So there is an existing real threat to the groundwater of Vancouver Island. So what I've done in, in my campaign to help protect the water is, we've asked local communities in the Comox Valley, started with the Comox Valley Regional District. We asked them to amend their bylaws to prohibit the bottling of water, and currently that bylaw revision is in process. I asked the village of Cumberland to prohibit water bottling, and the village has since changed its zoning bylaws to prohibit the bottling of groundwater. I asked the City of Courtney to prohibit bottling of groundwater in their zoning bylaws, and they passed a motion to prohibit the bottling of groundwater... and they passed a motion to prohibit the bottling of groundwater and have referred that to staff to actually revise the bylaws. I just recently presented to the town of Comox, so that's currently still under consideration. Last September, as part of the process, I contacted the Strathcona Regional District since the Murreville water license holder had stated that he intended to go to the Strathcona Regional District to bottle his water, since he couldn't do it in the Comox Valley. The Strathcona Regional District took immediate steps to prevent that and then took further action on January 24 when they passed a resolution that will be presented at the upcoming AVICC convention and the fall UBCM convention, asking the provincial government to cease approval of licenses for bottling of groundwater for commercial sale or bulk export. I have now contacted all the members of the AVICC, initially asking them whether their bylaws permitted the bottling of water, groundwater, and then if so, asking them to revise their bylaws to prohibit the bottling of groundwater. And then my second request is to ask them to support the Strathcona Regional District resolution when it becomes before the AVICC convention in April. Another recent, a little bit of feedback that I got from the Sunshine Coast Regional District was an excerpt from their policy manual, which expressly states that the Sunshine Coast Regional District does not support the extraction of freshwater resources in gas, liquid, or solid form from surface or groundwater for the purpose of commercial bottled water sales. So I included, as a handout here this evening, an excerpt from that policy manual. In my opinion, I believe this is a very bold statement on behalf of the Sunshine Coast Regional District and is a policy that all communities should aspire to and try to emulate. So this evening, I have two requests for the City of Colwood council. Number one, that you consider taking the necessary steps to implement a bylaw that prohibits the bottling of groundwater in any of your zoning, to help protect our groundwater today and for our children and for our grandchildren in the future. Secondly, I ask that the City of Colwood support the Strathcona Regional District resolution at the April AVICC convention, which asks the provincial government to cease the approval of licenses for commercial extraction of groundwater resources for bottling or bulk water export. We cannot allow water bottling from our aquifers based on theory and calculations. The consequences of being wrong could be catastrophic. I would sincerely appreciate the support of the City of Colwood in protecting the above-ground uses of our groundwater by preventing anyone from bottling and selling water from any aquifer in BC. Water is our most precious resource. Water is life. We must do everything we can to protect and conserve it. Thank you very much for your time and your consideration.
Thank you. Counsel, do you have any questions before I bring it back to the table? All right. Seeing none, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Counsel, we have two options this evening. We can either receive this, or, as you've heard from the speaker, that we can ask staff to direct to research on bringing forward a bylaw that prohibits bottling of groundwater in any zoning, and that also that the City of Colwood support the Strathcona Regional District resolution at the April AVICC convention, asking the provincial government to cease the approval of licenses for commercial extraction of groundwater. What I would recommend to council, just for consideration, is I would suggest that it probably is not the best use of our resources to have staff research on bringing forward a bylaw until after AVC, AVICC, so that we have a clear direction on what's happening there, but that this is completely up to council on what they would like to do this evening. Counselor Day?
Thank you. I could sort of imagine a third option, which is to ask the Water Commission to look at it, because a long time ago, I believe, we considered something like this at the Water Commission, and it certainly has been an issue within the Greater Victoria area with concerns. There was mapping done by the CRD as to where the aquifers are located. There are a number of wells that still exist in Colwood that could potentially be an issue in the future. Most residential homes are on city water, but not all.
Thank you. Counselor Logan, do you have any comments before regarding that statement?
No, I'm just trying to rationalize, I guess, to understand what the ask would be of the Water Commission in that third option.
Sorry, just to know whether or not they have considered prohibiting the bottling of water for bulk or commercial sale.
Okay. Certainly, since I've been on the Water Commission, we haven't, but I can reach out and find out some more information on that one.
Great. So, looking back to council, I either need a motion to receive this or other direction.
I'd move receipt.
Thank you. Counselor Parkinson? I need a seconder. Oh, thank you. Counselor Kobayashi? Any other discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Carried? Thank you. Seven, correspondence regarding council direction from Mayor Ken Williams. The District of Highlands is challenging associations of Vancouver Island coastal community local governments to a municipal survivor climate challenge. The challenge is to members of council to reduce their average footprint. The District of Highlands hopes to launch the challenge on Earth Day, April 22, 2019, and it would run to Earth Day 2020. There is a recommendation that's before you. I'm happy to read it if anybody needs help, but it's just that the February 26 correspondence from the District of Highlands be received and that the City of Colwood accept the municipal survivor climate challenge from the District of Highlands commencing on April 22, 2019. Basically saying, we're going to smoke everybody else. Because we're going to... Yeah, Counselor Day?
So I'll move that recommendation and that we take up the challenge, and hopefully we will...
Win.
Win. Or at least get bragging rights.
I need a seconder. Thank you, Counselor Logan. Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Counselor Kobayashi and Parkinson oppose that. So it passed? No, no, it passed because those two opposed. So now we're on to eight. 8.1, planning tech development variance regarding 370 Latoria Drive in Dunlin Street. The applicant has requested to vary Section 4.8 of the Colwood sign bylaw to erect three temporary development signs on two lots associated with the Royal Bay development. The item was discussed at the APC meeting of February 13, and you also heard the speaker this morning. Does council have any... Or it's this morning. This evening. Does council have any questions for staff? Seeing none, then? I... There is... I'm sorry. Counselor Day?
You have to look up when you say that.
Oh, I did. I looked, and then I go quick.
So the question that I had was in regard to the speaker tonight mentioned that they would be willing to look at a three-year term instead of a five-year term, and just wondering if I could get staff's take on that.
Thanks very much. Through your chair, our through your worship, three years, five years, they've also committed to providing money, that we heard tonight as well, for the removal of the signs should it come down. So the time, I appreciate having a cap on her. I think that would be suggested, but three or five, it's almost irrelevant at that point.
Yeah, I'm happy with the recommendation, and I really appreciate that the applicant listened carefully to what the APC had some concerns about and came up with some solutions. So I think we should take them up on those solutions, because I think the community will be more assured that things will go well. And I would so move.
Thank you. I need a seconder. Seconded by Counselor Parkinson.
I think we're option A, aren't we? Which I'm seconding as.
Did you second that? You did, okay, great. Excuse me. On the motion, then? Any other discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Carried. 8.2, planning tech development variance application regarding 3140 Flanagan Place. The applicant is requesting a relaxation of the land use bylaw to accommodate the construction of a 66.98 meter squared attached garage onto an existing family, single-family dwelling. The item was discussed at APC meeting held on February 13. Does council have any questions for staff? I'm looking up. Counselor Day?
Thank you. I read the report carefully, including everything that went forward to the APC. I think that the resident has done everything in his power to ensure that the creek is well-maintained and cared for, and I would move the recommendation that's in front of us.
Second?
Thank you. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Carried. 8.3, development variance permit regarding 21... Excuse me, 2915 Dickinson Place. The applicant has requested, has proposed variances that include a full relaxation of all road improvements required on Dickinson Road, except street lighting, and a full variance of all road improvements required on 80... Is it 80? 80? 80? Does count...
Nobody's seen the bill.
Nobody knows. Thank you. Okay, that's good. Does council have any questions for staff? Yep, Counselor Kobayashi?
I just want to be clear now. So what we proposed at Committee of the Whole was for the applicant to put a street lamp at the footway of that pathway, right? Is that where... But yet, he lives way down the road? Is that correct? He lives way down here, right?
Right here.
Oh, yeah, right here, that's right. So, yeah, that's right. I'm looking up. Okay, now I know where I'm looking at.
So the proposed street light is right by the new lot that's being created by the path.
Okay, got you now. I just wanted... Yeah, I just wanted to make sure I was clear on that.
I'll just look to staff. Staff, do you want to clarify? So the proponent this evening brought up that, basically, he suggested that it was repetitive to put two lights in that short-distance area. What's staff's opinion?
Thank you. Through your worship, to answer Counselor Kobayashi's question, the subdivision is at the end of the road, pretty close, and so the improvements that are proposed would tie into both ends of the road. Through your worship, there is two existing hydro-supplied Davit arms, one on each road end. Those Davit arms do cost the city an annual rent charge, as well as a bulk meter charge for the light supply. Where possible, we try to take it down. We have been in discussions with this applicant, and the lighting levels do appear to be adequate for both terminuses of two roadways. I wasn't at the Committee of the Whole, but I do understand that the committee did request that instead of a streetlight improvement on Dickinson, which was intended to replace that hydro light with the new light, that that not occur on Dickinson, but instead go to the end of the trail on 80, which is very, very close to his property. One of the interesting things, though, is if you look at the picture provided tonight by the applicant, can you see it on it? The light that's on 80, or a dye, or whatever it's proposed, is, you can see that it's actually on the less treed side of the road, so it's actually carrying a fair bit of lumens. One of the reasons to pull those lights, lumens, is the lighting level that's portrayed on the street. One of the reasons to remove those lights is to bring them down to a more ground-oriented look, to get them out of people's windows and lights. But the existing light is well situated in the dye, and that's why we'd spoken to the applicant about the Dickinson improvement, because it was more shaded, more treed, and less light was permeating the road. However, it is committees wish that they, that council consider a dye in lieu of Dickinson for the lighting level improvement. The applicant is also requesting to do trail works, which should provide good continuity along this frontage to tie into that trail route that's established right away to the north.
And I realize you weren't there, but my recollection of the Committee of the Whole meeting was that the people on Dickinson were quite content with the lighting, that they didn't want more light, and so they said, well, why don't you put it on the other road then? So, Counselor Logan?
Thank you. You're quite right, your worship, and I think what committee seized on...
Sorry, could you say that again?
There is some truth in the words that you speak tonight, your worship, in that the committee, I think, seized on some comments from a resident on 80 Road that suggested that lighting be placed right at the trailhead, but to, in defense of the committee, we just weren't aware of where the arms were, where Davit lights were. Otherwise, I'm sure that perhaps we may not have considered that. I'm just putting words in our mouth, but certainly we weren't aware of the adequate lighting there. So there is some argument, I think, to be made about overlighting and having an impact on the community by providing too much and also adding an additional cost to the city for having to supply power and maintenance and all that jazz. So I appreciate the new information that was brought tonight, and I'll go from there. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Day?
Thanks. The only question I guess I'm left with is, obviously, when we discussed this at committee, we weren't aware of the Davit Arm light on 80 Road. But what I am very keenly aware of is the need to move to LED lights, even on the Davit arms. There is a big financial benefit to the city as a whole every time we can convert one of those. So is there a way that we could replace the existing light with an LED-style light butt in the same location?
Through your worship. Excellent question, Counselor Day, because that is a very, very focused point, as well as that clear eyes for the night skies, as you've already spoken about with hotspots. BC Hydro has a replacement program in place. I don't know how many lights they have per year, but per year, they've got a scheduled replacement to replace the lights, and they're basically moving their way through municipalities. It would be, I don't know for sure, but I think it would be difficult to have them amend their program to place an LED light here. The city's lighting program, if we were to take down the hydro-supplied Davit arm and put up a light at the cost of the developer, would be an LED-style streetlight.
Okay, that's not very helpful, in that I know that we have had, we have had a greater number of streetlights converted to LED over the past several years through making that choice to accelerate the program, because the cost savings alone allowed us to replace And I'm not sure what to do here, because I really would like to take advantage of the opportunity to change that street lighting to more dark-skY friendly, but without necessarily having to change the location. So I need more, I think, staff input than, and I understand, I can't reasonably expect you to come up with that in the moment here tonight. So I'm trying to think of how I can, how we could do this so that we could achieve the goal and not hold up the development either. So would it be possible to ask staff to, to get a solicit... I can't really do that. But to come up with an agreement with the developer to pay for the provision of a light and then have it done if and when the time is right to do it? Like a deposit, if you will, on a future light being amended?
Yeah, staff?
That would be through a non-relaxation of the improvement, and then what we would do is council would pass the motion to retain a light of sorts on 80, and then we would not install it and accept cash-in lieu for that installation. However, that's not going to really advance a work program, because it's either Hydro's light and their program and their timing, or our light and our LED intent. And I'm not so sure that Hydro has reduced its bulk rate yet for those lights that are converted. Because we pay an annual, you know, based on a monthly billing, I'm not sure if it's been flipped over to the LED lower consumption rate. So I could find that information out and report back, and meanwhile, work with the applicant in terms of the cash-in lieu objective if you... and meanwhile, work with the applicant in terms of the cash and the objective, if you wish.
Counselor Parkinson?
Yeah, I hear you, Counselor Day, and we would like to, of course, get LED lights all over the place, but I think at the end of the day, let's be practical here. We don't need another city-standard LED light, ornamental, beautiful lights, but we heard loud and clear from the people on Dickinson that they were very happy with what they had and where it was, so let's not fuss about that one. We thought there was an opportunity to improve lighting on the trail going across the cemetery, and I think we've heard, and I, you know, I take their word for it, that the lighting there is satisfactory. And really, it's pretty straightforward. I would suggest we just carry on. You know, if the developer wanted to buck up for a few LED bulbs to go into storage at the public works till we came to replace something somewhere, that'd be nice of them, but I don't think it's worthwhile delaying anything here. So I'd be prepared to move the recommendation, items A through L, and just not put on M. I think that's got it right, doesn't it? Yeah, that would do everything except put the new street light on the end of 80 Road that we talked about last week.
Counselor Logan?
Thank you, your worship. I think, just to make it consistent, I think you would probably want to change or amend M to strike that last sentence, the last line, and add zero, so it would read new number CY15T420, so essentially waiving the requirement to that, and that's similar to the wording under F.
I bow to your experience.
All right. So, yeah, so I guess you... Counselor Logan's applying for a job. So I do have a motion by Counselor Parkinson that he was happy to amend to the way Counselor Logan suggested it. You're seconding it? Okay, great. I'll go discussion now on that change. Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Carried. 8.4. Police operating budget. At the Committee of the Whole meeting held March 4, 2019, an overview of the police operating budget was provided that resulted in the recommendation attached to the agenda for adoption. Does counsel have any questions for staff?
Move the recommendation, your worship?
Thank you. Moved by Counselor Logan, seconded by Counselor Day. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Carried. Thank you. Bylaws, there are none, and there's nothing to release out of in camera?
Move adjournment.
Thank you. All those in favor? Opposed?